Let me just start that over again, thank you. I'd like to call to order the July 8, 2019 meeting. Please join Councilmember Hampton in the Pledge Allegiance and the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, equal to all, with liberty and justice for all.
God, thank you for this great city and residents that are in it, Lord. Thank you for this community. I just thank you and ask you to be with those that serve our country abroad, our military, be with our fire and our police, and also our city staff that are working hard to make the city a better place. I also thank you for this great country, Lord, that we can have open dialogue and opinions and enjoy our freedoms. I also want to ask that you also be with those that are dealing with the earthquakes in other parts of the country and also the fires that are in our state as well. Please give us wisdom to make the best decisions that are in the best interests of our city and also our citizens. In your name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Councilman Hampton. All right, we do have one council person, Wally Campbell, calling in. Wally, are you there?
Yes, I am, Mayor, thank you.
Well, welcome. We greatly appreciate that you're calling in.
Thank you.
All right, since we're all present, we have no communication items tonight. So now is the time for citizens who would like to address the City Council on any non-agenda item. That is a non-agenda item within the jurisdiction of the Goodyear City Council. Do you have any more names? I do have three here. It's just the three names for this item. Okay, good. So you want to go ahead and call them out? Bonnie Jansen? And I'm going to just take a moment by just to remind somebody if they haven't been before us. These are, the council will listen to your comments this evening and they take one of the following, one of the following responses. Respond to your criticism. Request the staff investigate and report on the matter. Request that the matter be scheduled on a future agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. The yellow light will let you know you have 20 seconds left to speak. And before you begin, please say your name clearly for the record. Thank you.
My name is Bonnie Jansen. And I understand that hours after Goodyear approved Nike, Governor Ducey withdrew Arizona Nike plant incentives and said, "Arizona's economy is doing just fine without Nike." Mayor Lord said, "I can appreciate the emotion and discussion that I've heard on this important topic. We will honor the commitment we made in our agreement." And on July 3rd, despite the governor's decision, Lord said, "City incentives for the Nike plant were still active." As much as the following may seem to be emotional thinking, it is just rational, common sense. I was so thrilled when Governor Ducey announced no Nike in Arizona. Finally, someone is interested in saving our country besides President Trump. And then there is Goodyear. It is unconscionable that the mayor and the city council actually agreed to let Nike come to Goodyear. We had a grand opportunity to stand up to the nonsense that is plaguing our country today, and we failed miserably. You say that the company will bring jobs. Well, there seems to be plenty of companies willing to plant themselves in Goodyear as of late. The word offend and offended are being entirely overused these days. But I say that the un-American athlete who represents Nike is an offensive symbol of all we stand for in America. How is he allowed to have his way? He is trying to destroy history, and the city of Goodyear is helping him. I, for one, am hugely disappointed that Goodyear has no backbone. Interestingly, in the AMAC, which is Association of Mature American Citizens website poll, 15,832 agree, 316 disagree, and 113 not sure, meaning no Nike. And a couple more things. Ted Cruz says, "It's a good thing Nike only wants to sell sneakers to people who hate the American flag." Herman Cain? Just so you know how this works now, nothing can happen in America anymore if Colin Kaepernick doesn't like it. Last, if things have changed since July 3rd, then pardon me.
Thank you. Next. Michelle Baxter?
My name is Michelle Baxter. Thank you for allowing me to speak at the City Council meeting today.
Michelle, can you just bend that microphone? Thank you very much.
Sorry. Thank you for allowing me to speak at the City Council meeting. I agree with Governor Ducey regarding pulling the incentives for Nike Corporation regarding the Betsy Ross flag. I am very disappointed with the City Council and Mayor with their decision. Betsy Ross was a Quaker who did not believe in slavery. She was an abolitionist. Know your history. For Nike Corporation to kowtow to Colin Kaepernick, who is un-American and has caused division for the people of this country, how sad. Why would the residents of Goodyear be proud to work for a company who endorses the likes of Kaepernick and his anti-American sentiments? I don't think they'd want to work there. I believe Goodyear will have other opportunities with other corporations coming to provide jobs here in the near future, as we see all around us. There is so much building going on. We should never let money take precedence over our core values as Americans. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Robert Baxter?
My name is Robert Baxter. Appreciate this opportunity to address the council. And I'd like to express a little bit of my views on what has been going on with regards to the Nike situation. I believe that this is something that is far beyond an issue of jobs or of a little flag on the back of a tennis shoe. This is something that concerns all of us about who we are as Americans. That flag that we took an oath of allegiance to is something that means a lot to me. And for somebody to tell me that it doesn't mean those things and then wants my money and wants my vote, no, it doesn't work that way. I'm sorry. I'm a veteran. I'm a disabled veteran. I've given to this country. And here they have somebody who has never given a single thing back to this country but had nothing but an elitist lifestyle. To sit there and dictate to a company that is willing to say, "Oh, okay, well, we'll take it off." Why? Over revisionist history, over things that are not true? This is not right. 500 jobs? There's plenty more to be had. I just cannot understand why you had even a unanimous vote on this issue. Nobody stood up to say a thing about it. This is wrong. And there are things that are wrong. We have principles that we live by, and we put our principles above all else. Those men that pledged their life, their honor, their homes, everything, they put it all on the line for that flag. Betsy Ross sewed that flag out of love and out of hope for a country that has never existed before and that we are so blessed to live in. And now we just want to take all of that and throw it away. I am very, very disappointed. I know it's not, what I say here now is probably not going to change a thing. But I hope that you will understand what you have done by doing this. Because I know that I speak for a lot of other people in this community. And we will remember when it comes election time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other? No, Mayor. All right, thank you. Will the city, will go to the cons... Oh, yes. Please come forward. Do you... We'll just go to the city clerk and give your name, please. Thank you. If anybody else is in the audience that wants to speak, if you'll come up and get a card, we greatly appreciate that. Yeah, that's fine.
Good evening. I apologize for my late arrival. This is the first time I've been to one of these meetings.
I'm sorry, we moved that one microphone, so just kind of, thank you very much.
Sorry for my late arrival. I did my best to get here with the wife getting off of work, sorry.
You're right.
This is a really daunting thing for me to be here today. In the light, in light of everything that's been discussed already in terms of what's right, morality, fairness, truth, justice. I have a situation I want to bring to your feet. Has nothing to do with Nike, has everything to do with total property management governed by HOA Phase 5, governed by total property management, and point of contact being Lori Grove. In my possession, I have evidence of flyers that have been pushed out to the residence of HOA Phase 5 stating that our vehicles will be towed with no notice on the city streets in front of our residences at their prerogative, just because it's written into their HOA code. They seem to take it upon themselves to believe that they supersede law. They have taken it upon themselves to essentially act as privateers, to engage with oversight towing company. They've published this flyer to the residence, which is clear intent to defraud the residence and steal from us. I see it no different. Previous veteran who spoke made a good point. Our constitution governs explicitly that we have the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Liberty, my property rights. The pursuit of happiness, not having to ask my HOA for approval to park on my city street that I pay my tax dollars for. I'm a retired Army major. I'm a former Eagle Scout. I'm an adult leader of a Cub Scout pack, and I will be with the Boy Scouts. I've served my country for 15 years, got blown up in Iraq and Afghanistan. I'm a Purple Heart recipient. I don't come to you to say these things to toot my own horn, but to let you understand, I'm an upstanding member of my community, and I'm being harassed by my HOA, who feels that they are above the law. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the definition of racketeering. If I park on the public street and they don't like it, they're going to tow my car. That will not happen. As God is my witness, in front of God and country, and you fine people and the citizens of this city, I will not stand to have my property stolen from me from in front of my home. It won't happen. And I promise, this is not a threat. It is a, it is a promise. God-given, unalienable rights that I fought for. I'm angry. And you should be too. Because you are our elected officials, and these people are taking it upon themselves to act as governance.
I'm going to have to tell you the red light, it's blinking.
Yes, ma'am.
But before you go, staff, could you look into this for us? And somebody get back to him as soon as you... Now, do you have his number and his address?
I'll pass this sheet back to her with all my point of contact information.
And thank you for your service, and thank you for coming up. Anybody else in the audience who wants to speak this evening? Then will the city clerk please read the consent agenda items 1 through 13 by title only, please?
1, approval of minutes. 2, approve the final plat for Compass Data Centers. 3, recommend approval of a new Series 10 liquor license for Pizza Hut number 27007. 4, adopt ordinance number 2019-1441, amending Section 3-11-2 Goodyear Youth Commission of the City Code and providing for correction severability and an effective date. 5, approve the expenditure of budgeted fiscal year 2020 funds for the purchase of two fire pumpers and the related budget transfer. 6, adopt resolution number 2019-1983, approving the issuance of a utility easement to Arizona Public Service Company, directing the city manager to execute the utility easement and the city clerk to record the easement, and providing for an effective date. 7, authorize acceptance of the public utility sidewalk and access easement adjacent to Bullard Avenue. 8, adopt resolution number 2019-1980, authorizing the establishment of a public utility sidewalk and access easement adjacent to a portion of 173rd Avenue to be administered and maintained by the city, requiring recordation and providing for an effective date. 9, approve fiscal year 2019 and fiscal year 2020 budget transfers. 10, adopt ordinance number 2019-1442, amending Chapter 3 of the City Code, Article 3-1, Section 3-1-5, to revise the name of the Communications Department to Digital Communications and to revise the name of Information and Technology Services to Information Technology, providing for corrections, severability, and an effective date. 11, adopt ordinance number 2019-1982, approving a minor land division consolidating eight city-owned parcels into one parcel for the City of Goodyear Public Facilities Campus, directing the city manager to execute the minor land division and providing for an effective date. 12, approve the recommended appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. And 13, authorize the acceptance of a special warranty deed for Compass Data Centers Track B.
Thank you. Does anyone in the council wish to remove an item from the consent again? All right, then I would like to have a motion and a second. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second. I heard a motion by Councilman Keno and a second by Councilman Pizzillo. Open for roll call vote, please. And could you remember, Councilman Campbell's on the phone. Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries. Thank you. The city clerk will now administer the oath of loyalty to the appointees in attendance.
Would the Youth Commission members please come forward? Gabriella Burton, Roman Mena, Sanjean Gonilovik, Jackson Hamblin, Meredith Horn, Josh McGee, Serena Navarro, Connor Schaefer, Grace Schaefer, and Tristan Smith? Going to try to juggle here. So, repeat after me. Raise your right hand. I then state your name. Do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of Commissioner according to the best of my ability. So I do affirm. Congratulations.
Will the city clerk for the people that are in the audience announce what this... Would you just announce what this... What committee they are, okay. We all go down there? Yes.
So they'll line you all up.
You're supposed to direct us. You want us down there? All right, come on, guys.
Where are we going?
And would Michael Balson and Jennifer Prair-Baunton please join me up here? So, repeat after me. Raise your right hand. I state your name. Do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of board member according to the best of my ability. So I do affirm.
And with this... I've asked one of our councilmembers to talk about the Youth Commission and how important they are. I usually do an introduction before they came up, and somehow we just missed that tonight. So I want to make up for that. So I've asked Councilmember Loretano, Sherry Loretano, to say something. Sherry?
I think most of them have left now with their parents. But though, if you're still here, or for those that you don't know, the Youth Commission is a wonderful, this was a group. Laura Keno, Wally Campbell, and I got to interview them all, had the honor. And they are just some phenomenal young people. They just blew us away how much they're doing, what they're doing at their young ages. The Youth Commission is great. John is in charge of it, and they do volunteer work for the city. They learn a lot about the city. They get to learn about leadership. They get to help everything from friends to the library, to help at other city services. And before, they have done projects, trick-or-treats, so others can eat collected food and help the needy. So they are a great group, and I am so excited to have them on board. And I think Laura and Wally would echo my sentiments on what a great group they are.
Absolutely. So let's get another round of applause. All right, we'll go to the business item. And so I'd like to remind council to wait for a motion a second before this discussion. The first item is a public hearing to consider rezoning planned area PAD for Goodyear Civic Square at Estrella Falls. Open the public hearing. Katie Wilken, I just want to make sure it was you. Katie Wilken, planning manager, will be presenting. Katie?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'm very pleased to be before you tonight to present this unique zoning case. The Goodyear Civic Square property includes 104 acres that's located north of McDowell Road and west of the Bullard, sorry, east of the Bullard Wash. I do want to be clear, it does not include the regional mall site, which is located here around Harkins. The 104 acres is made up of three parcels outlined in the yellow and highlighted in red shown on this. I also want to be clear that the presentation tonight pertains to the zoning of this property. It does not include the specific details regarding the city hall, library, and civic space. It is just zoning the land. There is going to be a future City Council meeting in which the development agreement is brought forward, and those details will be shared with you and the public at that time. This request began with a request by the property owner, Globe Land Investors, to rethink some of the areas planned for out parcels and the power centers of the mall site to introduce a mix of uses to try and get development going on the site. And when they brought that forward, staff immediately saw an opportunity to partner with them to make development happen in this area, as been requested by our community members for so many years. This property is located within the, currently is located within the Goodyear Planned Regional Center, PAD, which is outlined in the yellow, which includes a large amount of property. It was originally zoned in 2000 and 2001, and then the red outline is the 104 acres, which is being rezoned tonight. This is the original land use map from the 2000 zoning for the Goodyear Planned Regional Center. It has always included a mix of uses. There's also what we call a graduated density concept. Pebble Creek neighborhood is located to the north of this area, and so there's single-family residential located next to that single-family residential. And then the residential gets more dense, and then there's more intense commercial uses introduced as you get closer to the regional mall site. You will see that some of the road configurations have changed over the years. This was the original plan in 2001, and now it's changed slightly. There's also been a couple of amendments to the PAD since this was originally approved. This is the current configuration of the approved land uses. Again, you can still see, though, the graduated density concept of single-family being located next to single-family, and then it getting denser as you get closer to the regional mall site. There is already multifamily parcels included. This black outline is the 104 acres. And then, as you can see, the regional mall site is still intact. Rezoning this property also gives us an opportunity to not only introduce new uses that might be permitted, but to look at those existing permitted uses and rethink those as well. Again, this was zoned quite a long time ago in 2000 and 2001. So when you look through the permitted use list, there are a lot of uses that, thinking back, we might not, we either might not want at a regional mall site, or we might not want to be allowed adjacent to commercial use, I mean, adjacent to the existing residents that are out there. These are just a few of the highlighted of the uses. And so the applicant and staff have really combed through all these uses to rethink what is appropriate and best use of the land. The general plan designates the property as business and commerce. That allows a variety of commercial uses. It also does allow residential uses, as long as they're higher-density residential, 12 dwelling units per acre or more. There's also a village center overlay and transit-oriented development overlay, which promotes mixed uses, walkable, creating destination spaces in these areas. It also allows residential as well. Surrounding the property, as I said, getting a little more specific. North of Parcel B are single-family residences in the Rio Paseo neighborhood. Across from Parcel C are the cottages at Rio Paseo, which is a court home development. And then adjacent to that is the villages, which are three-unit-per-building triplexes. And then there's a multifamily development located on Bullard Avenue. And then there's a multifamily development located on Bullard Avenue, Aldea. Live Goodyear was recently opened, just on the other side of Bullard Wash. And then there's the existing market at Estrella Falls Commercial Center. And then along I-10 is the Goodyear Center Point. And then Harkins is already existing on the mall site. Delving into more detail on the zoning case, as I said, it's split into three parcels. Parcel A is about 48 acres, and it's located here, and this is where the Civic Square site would be located. And so it allows for a mix of commercial and some residential uses. Parcel B is a residential-plan parcel, located here. And parcel C is another mixed-use parcel. So looking in more detail at parcel A, it would allow a mix of retail office, restaurant, and entertainment uses, residential permitted, as long as it's not located on the first floor. And I should say, we're specifically... I should back up. Looking at this core area, what we did is we designated this middle section where the core city hall and buildings would be located around the square and restricted those uses and development standards a little bit more. And then these other areas are outside the core, which I'll get to in a minute, and have a little bit more flexibility. This PAD is a little different than we normally see in that we were very broad with the uses that are permitted, but then it really included some specific uses that are not permitted. And just some, for example, mini-storage, auto-oriented uses, such as, you know, auto repair, smoke shops, tattoo, funeral homes. Those uses that aren't really the mixed-use vibrant destination-type uses have been prohibited in this core area. The core area also allows more density. It's... The maximum height is 150 feet, but there's also height minimums, which is a unique concept. So in the main area, there's a min... The buildings must be a minimum of 40 feet tall. But within 150 feet of... This is 150th Drive. It's only a 20-foot minimum. There's also perimeter setbacks, which... Setbacks from McDowell Road, 150th, and Montevista. But there's not specific rear-side yard setbacks that we typically see in our development standards. We will be, in the future, creating a streetscape plan. The PAD doesn't get into specifics on how wide the sidewalk should be. We know we want them wide so that they can have sidewalk cafes, but it doesn't get into those specifics of zoning those. So we're going to be working on those design standards outside of the zoning process. And with that, we would also look at, you know, where is it appropriate for buildings to be set back in that level of detail with that document. So outside of the core area, so this parcel located on McDowell Road and the two parcels located on Montevista, all the uses that are allowed in the core area are allowed. But also hospitals, trade schools, and then residential on the first floor would be located in this section as well. Again, similar heights, 150 feet, but the minimum is 20 feet. And similar what the perimeter setbacks are defined, but not individual rear-side yard setbacks. On parcel B, both single-family and multifamily uses are permitted. There are specific development standards for traditional detached residential, also a green court product, which is similar to a court home-type product, and then attached residential, such as townhomes. Those standards are very similar to the standards in our zoning ordinance, and we'd see for those type of developments. Parcel C allows, again, all those commercial, office, retail uses that are allowed on parcel A, but multifamily is also allowed on parcel C. So the entire parcel could develop as multifamily. The entire parcel could develop as commercial, or there could be a mix of uses on this parcel. The height is allowed to be up to 60 feet, and there's a 25-foot minimum for the height. And it has those similar perimeter setbacks set. So if the zoning were approved, the land use plan would look something like this. Again, there's 142 acres still preserved for the greater mall site, which is what we see, you know, if you look at Arrowhead or Chandler Fashion Mall, it is... That's how big those mall sites are. So there's still plenty of land to be developed as the regional mall site, if that goes forward. The Civic Square would be 104 acres, and so that would have... You know, so the overall Goodyear Planned Regional Center area keeps over 100 acres in general commercial, plus all the acreage of the mixed-use commercials in the Civic Square and surrounding areas. And again, when you look at other regional mall, regional shopping destination areas, this does seem to be a similar mix of uses that we see in those areas. That is certainly something staff wanted to evaluate. Are we making any changes that could hurt the potential development of the future sites? But it does appear that these mixer uses are what we see in healthy, vibrant shopping centers throughout the valley. I did want to get into a little bit more detail of what's adjacent to the proposed development in parcel B and parcel C. So the existing residential to the north, Highlands at Rio Paseo, these are currently developed at 70-foot-wide lots. They're allowed to be 30 feet in height. There are two-story homes located in that development. Across from that, parcel B, it could be single-family or multifamily, and they're allowed to go up to 40 feet in height. The... Again, on the other side of Encanto, there's the court home product, and then a portion is the triplex. Across from there, it could either be developed as commercial or multifamily, or a mix of both, and that is allowed to go up to 60 feet in height. Now, the next couple of slides, I... We do have preliminary Platts, and we've had some pre-apps with some development proposals on parcel B and parcel C. I do want to be clear, these are not part of the zoning proposal. So we don't have any stipulations that requires development. But we do know there's a lot of interest, so we did want to share what we know with you, what's working in process. So this is a proposal that we have in for parcel B. And so on the southern portion, there is a mix of those attached townhomes around here, and then the green court here, and then there are single-family residential on the north portion. This is developed to be... To fit into the kind of mixed-use urban walkable development. There's not a subdivision perimeter wall located all around it. These townhomes that are located along Montevista actually face Montevista. These act as almost an alley with the garages, but the front door faces Montevista. So it hopefully gives it a more of a neighborhood feel, a more of an urban, walkable feel. They have not completely gated off access to the Bullard Wash. Staff worked with the applicant closely so we could have these openings to the Bullard Wash so that these residents can take advantage and have activity in the Bullard Wash area. And then, as you can see, they also have a planned central amenity. On parcel C, we do have a proposal for multifamily residential. So you can see there's kind of five pods, apartment complex dwelling buildings. And then this is the proposed elevation for those, so three-story buildings and just kind of traditional apartment complex. So I'm not going to go through and read this to you, but just for the public's benefit, this is the review criteria that's listed in the city zoning ordinance that gives both staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission guidance on how we evaluate zoning proposals. And so we've gone through all this criteria and have found that the proposed zoning meets all the review criteria. There was a neighborhood meeting held on June 5th. There were approximately 14 residents. Generally, we heard support for the civic and commercial uses. However, there was opposition noted to the multifamily. There was concerns noted that there could be increased crime and traffic, and there was concern regarding potential impacts to schools and amenities. But as I said, when you look at the review criteria, the proposed zoning does meet all the review criteria and items that staff and commission are given to guide our decision-making. It has been found to be consistent with the general plan, and as I said, it meets the review criteria. At the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing, there was one speaker. He didn't oppose the rezoning request. He had a couple of questions. He did have some questions and concerns about access and suggested we provide additional access to the residential parcel. But again, there was no objection to the overall proposed uses or development standards. Planning and Zoning Commission voted to recommend approval by five to zero vote. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is also here.
Katie, thank you. Does the applicant wish to speak? I see him in the audience. Please state your name.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Ed Bull, 702 East Osborne. I'm here on behalf of Globe. Also here this evening is BB Living, who's interested in parcel B, and Greenlight, who's interested in about half of parcel C. I agree with everything that Katie said in her presentation. I also agree with what was discussed at your joint Planning Commission, City Council Study Session, and at the Planning Commission hearing. We're delighted with the recommendations for approval. We accept the stipulations. I'm happy to make a presentation now if you want it. Otherwise, I'd also be happy to defer the remainder of my time to rebuttal if need be, because if you're pleased with the recommendations, so are we.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Bull. If there was questions, I'll call you up, all right?
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
Yes, Mayor. Susan Hinkle?
What was that last name?
Inkle?
Siegel?
Hinkle.
Hinkle.
Oh.
Hinkle. Got you. Welcome.
Good evening, and thanks for the opportunity to address the council. I do agree with a lot of the presentation that just happened, although I'm a Rio Paseo resident, and we have major concerns in our neighborhood about the addition of multifamily housing directly across from our development on 151st and Virginia. We are presented with bad traffic already because we go into a single lane that is adjacent to the large park and the walking park across the street. And then we're also concerned with the multi-units that we have on the corner of Pase... Pebble Creek and Virginia, that we've noticed there's crime happening. I mean, you know, we've got crime in the park. We have crime at those apartments. The police are there all the time. And it's affecting our neighborhood. We've actually, as an associate, as a neighborhood, we've hired, out of our homeowners' money, off-duty police officers to patrol our neighborhood. So we felt like we were in a very safe place for a very long time. The biggest problem that we face is that it's going to diminish the values of our property. All these... We're looking at over 900 multi-units in a one-mile radius. And that's a lot of multi-units and a lot of traffic for that area. We went to the original presentation, and we, like, was presented, 14 residents were there to oppose this. And so what I would ask for the council is to get statistics from the Goodyear Police Department about the number of calls that are at the multi-units that are going on right now on the corner of Virginia and Pebble Creek, and also our neighborhood where we've had some vandalism occurring. Different things have happened. So I would ask that the council refrain from approving the rezoning. We're happy with everything else that the council... That's going on in this area, but the multi-units are just something that we just feel is going to not be good for the neighborhood.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak? All right. Then I'm going to close the public hearing. Will the city clerk please read Resolution Number 2019-1798 by title only?
Adopt Resolution Number 2019-1798, declaring as public records those certain documents filed with the city clerk titled Official Supplementary Zoning Map, Number 19-04A, City of Goodyear, Arizona, Rezone Case. Goodyear Civic Square, Legal Description, and Goodyear Civic Square at Estrella Falls, Final Planned Area Development, dated June 27, 2019.
Thank you. Can I have a motion, a second, to adopt Resolution Number 2019-1798? Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilmember Stiff and a second by Councilmember Laura Tonno. Open for council discussion. Councilman Stiff? I'm sorry, it's Vice Mayor Stiff.
It's all right. It's only been a week.
It's only been a week. You're right.
First question. Chief, are you prepared to talk about the crime statistics? Can we hear about that tonight? Please.
So good evening, the mayor and council. We've looked at the stats in Rio Paseo for the last year. What I can tell you is the subdivision is very safe. There's very little crime. When we looked at our Part I statistics, I think we had one burglary last year and one this year. And that's what's being reported to us. What we don't know, we don't know. For things such as disturbances, to give an example, we had 37 over the past year. That could be anything from somebody yelling, to loud music, to a family argument. 37 over a year's time is not excessive. We also had 35 suspicious event calls. That could be somebody just walking through the neighborhood, a garage door open, or a car parked in the street that somebody doesn't recognize. Again, 35 is not excessive. We've had 33 traffic complaints in and around the subdivision. Our traffic unit has spent considerable time out there the last few weeks since it was brought to our attention. And hopefully, the residents have seen that. So just in summary, Rio Paseo is very safe. And there's no... Really no... Nothing tells us that the multifamily across the street has had a significant impact with crime in Rio Paseo.
Can you speak to the... Any incidents at the Live Goodyear complex?
Yes. So, for example, crime is very low at Live also. We've had a few auto burglaries. Those have been from unlocked cars. We had 23 disturbances at Live, but in a multifamily complex, that's not unreasonable at all when you have pools and so many people living close together. Again, there's no evidence to show that Live Apartments is creating more crime in the neighboring communities.
Okay. Thanks, Chief. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, you may.
Mrs. Hinkle, if I can just address you directly. I live at Live Goodyear. I am not seeing the same issues that you're talking about as a resident there. And so I'm hearing the crime statistics. Obviously, that drives, you know, our decision-making on multifamily just in general. And I don't think it's... Not just where you're talking about. It's... For me, it's citywide. You know, what impact is it going to have, et cetera. Katie, can you bring back the presentation and show the original zoning map before we went through this? And the reason that I'm going down that road is it was always my understanding that... Yeah, that one. That the area around the mall was going to be multifamily or the non-traditional, single-family home concept like the court homes and the townhouses and the multifamily, et cetera. That was always the... That was always the intent. And I think that's what we want to try to buffer, the single-family homes from that entertainment area of the regional mall is with the multifamily. Similar to what you're seeing in the proposal that is single-family on the top, and then multifamily as it gets closer to Montevista. That is the standard kind of design elements, if you will, on how this goes through. So it's very hard to say, for me, we shouldn't do it because that was always the intent. Now, I know we've got a project that's been presented. I am concerned about a 60-foot elevation on that parcel. That is very, very high. But you're... Well, that's five-story, but the current proposal is three. Is that correct? Because I think you've got a slide on that one, too, Katie.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor. The proposal is not for a 60-foot-tall building. To be honest, I'm not sure of the exact height that's proposed. There are representatives here who may be able to answer that question. As you can see, it is three stories. But what is important is the zoning, as it is today, would permit 60 feet in height.
Let's bring the representative on the height for us. Could you ask?
Is that Mr. Bull? The one on the... The one on the very right, which I think is... See? Mayor, Vice Mayor. The... The party that's working with Globe on about half of parcel C, roughly nine acres of parcel C, has proposed...
has proposed three-story building elevations. The height isn't absolutely established yet. That has to go through site plan review and so on. But the three-story buildings would be approximately 40 feet, give or take, in building height. The 60 feet is something that was discussed with staff as a way to provide development standards, to provide guidance and opportunities for some of the graduated density concept and other things that Katie talked about in her presentation, to provide some of the rooftops and some of the demographics to support other commercial and entertainment and other uses in the area.
I don't recall seeing the 60 feet in our joint presentation. So when I saw it in this presentation, and then obviously tonight, for me, that was a, holy cow, this is much taller than we're used to. 40 feet for a three-story, I think, is becoming the new norm. So that is not, that's not surprising. But I... For... I think for this particular area, what we're getting, what we're being presented with is actually a very logical choice. And I think what you'll see from a property value perspective, everybody always wants to say it's going to lower my property values, but every single time that we bring these developments and it actually increases the property value. So I think we're looking at a very thoughtful process as we go through with our staff, so...
Excuse me. I'm sorry. You had your opportunity and...
Vacancy at Live is zero.
So...
It's full.
Feel free to put it in writing for me. Give it to the city clerk. I'm willing to take that, okay? Thank you. Councilman Hampton?
I have a question about also the parcel C. What, how much... I don't see how... How many acres is parcel C? And what percent, or how many acres is being used? Nine acres of the total that is proposed?
I think you just better go to the microphone, Katie.
That is proposed right now for parcel C?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Hampton. Let me show you. So this is the summary of parcel C. And let me, I need... So parcel C is 17 acres.
17 acres. Thank you.
And I am not sure if it says on here, because I am not sure. I think it's about nine acres.
Yeah, I think Ed said nine acres.
Nine acres for the current proposal.
And we don't know what the others... So it's all the frontage, most of the frontage. We don't know. We're hoping, because I'm hoping, it's going to be also commercial, the other half of it. But it could be that, or it just could be more multifamily or a mix of something like that as well.
That's correct. Commercial uses, multifamily are both permitted on the parcel. So it could be one, the other, or a mix of both.
Okay. And isn't... This might be one for Rebecca, but along Encanto there, is, are they looking at widening that road? Because it does go down the one lane right there where the park is, when you're going east to west or west to east.
Thank you, councilmember. Yes, and it is planned for a two, median two. And for any portion that fronts what will be developed, they would be required to develop that piece.
Okay. And do we know... I know there's really not much parking right there for the park right now. With that widening, will that be causing issues with people trying to park to get to that park there, essentially?
And are you referring, just so I understand, the park on the north side of the road?
The Bullard Wash Park. Which would be the south side of Encanto, right there? Virginia? Is it Virginia?
Yeah, Virginia.
Sorry, Virginia. I'm looking at the...
Need where the park is.
Virginia. Virginia.
Okay. And if I could have you restate your question. I'm not sure I clearly understand.
Yeah, I... So when I drive along Virginia there, I see people parking in what will eventually be a... Sounds like another part of the two-by-two lane there. So if we take away and make that more into a two-lane road, then people won't be able to get to that park. So I didn't know if there's a plan to make some sort of parking available for people to use that part of the park there.
So for that answer, I cannot answer the part about if there's going to be additional parking for that area planned. However, if the roadway is widened, as is anticipated, with being two median two, we would also have bike lanes, so there would not be parking allowed on the main road.
Okay. But there will be... That's good to bring up, too. So there will be bike lanes?
Yes.
All the way through that, along with that complete street, essentially? And that'll only go till... To parcel C? You won't go complete all the way till to Bullard, correct?
And I'm sorry.
That two-lane highway, that two-lane road widening will only go to parcel C? It won't continue on to Bullard, correct? Until that gets developed?
Look at the screen and quickly a moment. They put it down.
So for parcel C, they're only going to be required to improve the frontage directly adjacent to them. From what I'm seeing is west of that park area appears to be just east of what is the Live Goodyear site. I believe Live Goodyear owns that parcel, but they haven't developed that piece yet. When they develop that piece, they will be responsible for improving that section of the roadway. So I think the parcel C and B that we were talking about earlier is actually to the east. And if I recall, those improvements have already been made and were made as part of the Improvement District for the entire site.
Christopher just came up, so is there something you want to add to that?
If I may. When we were evaluating the zoning proposal, all of the roadway infrastructure there is already built to the maximum extent. The reason that that necks down into one lane is to provide some, and I know it's a little bit washed out on that area. I'm sorry for that. It necks down to one. It's a painted stripe in order to provide some parking for citizens and patrons to get to the Bullard Wash.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it'll... So it sounds like in the future, that'll... At least that section will always be necked down to one, provide parking there? Is that a fair statement?
That is not a fair statement.
Okay.
And I appreciate your questions. And I would ask that I could look into this for you and give you a comprehensive response. Would that be acceptable?
Okay. I don't need to throw it at you. I just want to make sure, once we do overhaul Virginia there, that it doesn't bottleneck open, bottleneck open, so the residents will have a safer flow of traffic there.
Thank you. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Don't go anywhere. Christopher, did you even say something? You just... Okay. Any... Oh.
Yeah, and also I'm...
Another one? Okay.
Yeah, I am also concerned a little bit about the 60-foot height there. I'm just going to echo what Bill brought up as well. So how that's going to affect that area. And I think that'd be one of the tallest apartment complexes, potentially, that we would allow in the city, right? It would be 60-foot. So...
Are you asking a question or just making a statement?
Just in general. I'm kind of talking in general to anybody who wants to answer my question.
Okay. Are you making... One more time, I'm going to say that. You're making a statement or you're asking a question?
Would 60-foot be the tallest building, apartment complex in Goodyear?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember. 60-foot would be the tallest. I am looking up. I'm not positive of what the current P.E.D. allows. I know our C2 district allows 56...
56?
Foot height currently. So it's not that different from our C2 general commercial regulations. But I have to admit, I'm not positive if the Goodyear Planned Regional Center mimics that or allows more or less height.
Okay. Okay. That's all I had. Thank you.
Any other question? Councilmembers... Councilmember Basillo?
I don't know if it's Katie or Mr. Bull, but I'm not hearing 60-foot for the apartment. Am I missing something here? I'm hearing 40, tops. Is that correct, Mr. Bull? I'm not sure where the 60 is coming from.
Mayor, Councilmember Basillo, and others who have questions about the 60 feet. Please remember that parcel C is being zoned from regional mall kinds of uses and the intensities associated with that to uses that can include commercial or multifamily or a combination of the two. It happens to be that Globe is working with a proposed developer on about half of parcel C that would propose to develop that approximately nine, nine-and-a-half acres of parcel C for multifamily. That's not a done deal. That's not made it all the way through the city. But in conjunction with various discussions with staff and kind of form-based code development standards discussions, 60 was identified as being an appropriate height to allow flexibility under appropriate circumstances for commercial or for multifamily. And what Katie just showed me was an excerpt out of a P.E.D. book I wrote back when I was a youngster zoning this property years ago that she indicated permits 60 feet in building height on, today, on what is parcel C. So we're not taking it up. It's the same as what has been approved for many years.
All right.
Whether it all gets used or not.
All right. I'm going to send the questions down here. Councilmember Stiff, I mean, Basillo.
No. Yeah, go to Laura.
Okay. You're giving floor to her?
Yes.
All right. Councilmember Kano?
Katie, I have a clarification. On the list of prohibited items that were reviewed, I thank you for doing that. You mentioned that the core center around the Civic Square would smoke shops, pawn shops, et cetera, would be prohibited. Does that prohibition continue on outside of that core area to the rest, to A, B, and C?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember, yes. Most... There's a few exceptions which were noted in the slides where, you know, hospitals were allowed or I think we said certain clinics, too. But the smoke shops, tattoo pawn shops, those are prohibited throughout the three parcels.
Okay. I appreciate that clarification.
Are you ready? Councilmember Basillo?
Katie, back up again.
Yeah. Katie, just stay right up there, please.
When it actually comes back to the... If an apartment is done there, one of the issues, and I suspect we're going to be talking about it when it gets to our advanced retreat, whatever you want to call it, is the facade of these facilities, okay? Yeah, I like to see a little... The drawing looks really nice that you have there for the actual apartment complex. I like to see a little mix, something that breaks it up again as opposed to maybe one color, one light, one dark. I think the facade's really important when we do that. Other question I have is on your townhomes. I assume they're going to be very similar to, like, Wager Homes. You've got to have a mixture of different facades. They can't all look the same, all up and down the road. Is that an accurate statement?
Thank you. Yes. They would have to meet the city design guidelines.
Okay. Not to beat a dead horse on the 60-foot, but if an apartment comes back through there, do we have certain height restrictions as it comes to apartments only?
No. The height is, as it's written today, is allowed to be 60 feet. So any building could be built there with any uses inside as 60 feet. And again, it's also important to note that the plan is for mixed uses. So it's possible these things could evolve over time. So say, somebody built a 60-foot-tall office building. 20 years down the road, someone might want to convert it to residential as what's happening in Midtown Phoenix. But if there's different restrictions for residential or commercial, that might not be able to take place.
But the zone is already... Zoning is already set for that right now, the 60-foot?
Yes. The change is that multifamily would be permitted. Currently, commercial uses are allowed up to 60 feet. What would be changed is multifamily and commercial uses would be allowed up to 60 feet.
So we're not adding anything? We're not adding any heights to this particular...
Correct.
Wally, are you still with us?
Well, I sure am. And I don't have another question because I think council has asked everything I can think of.
All right. I know it's tough to do this. Is there any question you have for this conversation?
No, I don't have any question. Everybody's asked everything that needs to be asked, I think, Mayor. I think we just need to vote on it.
Great. Thank you. Anything else? Well, I'm going to just put mine in. You know, the plan's been there for a long time. So we've looked at this for a long time. And I can understand everybody concerned about the height. But I'm assuming, well, they say don't assume, but I feel that probably if one stood on the road and looked for the completion of the entire area, that it would be blend well. So I, you know, I don't think we're going to have, like, a big smokestack sitting high up above someone. So I think the way it's planned out, there'll be certainly a level easing to that. And how tall is the Class A office building? How many floors?
Thank you, Mayor. It's permitted to be up to 150 feet with a 40-foot minimum. In the zoning, it doesn't specify how tall those... That's part of the development agreement.
Can we translate that for people to understand how many floors?
Well, I mean, I think the plan is three floors for this office building. But I do want to be clear. There's nothing in the zoning document that requires that.
Right. All right. Just wanted a little information for the public, that's all. All right. And we've got the discussion closed? Nobody wants anymore, say? No questions? All right. Let's do a... Yeah. Yes.
Mrs. Hinkle. Reach out to me after the meeting via email on the city, since we live in the same neighborhood. I'd be happy to meet with you and talk about it further. So just reach out.
I'll just add one thing at the end. We've been trying to get to all the neighborhoods to tell them to lock their cars. I go to Comstat and I see the map. And all the neighborhoods are leaving their cars unlocked. Not only unlocked, but putting things in the back seat and the front seat so that the... Somebody looking through the window immediately says, whoa, I'm going to break into this one. In fact, I don't have to break in. I just have to open the door. So I'm just, since I have the forum tonight to talk about that, Chief, I'm just going to add that on. You can't imagine the percentages. That simple crime percentage is high. So, citizens, you've got to do your job. Got to lock those doors, so... All right. Discussion is finished. Let's do a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Stiff?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kano?
Aye.
Councilmember Basillo? Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right. Well, the city clerk, please read ordinance number 2019-1440 by title only.
Adopt ordinance number 2019-1440, conditionally rezoning approximately 104 acres from planned area development pad to planned area development pad for a development to be known as the Goodyear Civic Square at Estrella Falls Planned Area Development, amending the zoning map of the city of Goodyear, providing for non-abridgement, providing for corrections, providing for severability, providing for an effective date, and providing for penalties.
Thank you. Can I have a motion, a second, to adopt ordinance number 2019-19... Excuse me. 2019-1440. Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilmember Loretano, a second from Councilmember Kano. Open for council discussion. No discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Stiff?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cano?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right, we're down to 15. The next item on business is consider adopting resolution number 2019-1986, the Zayo License Agreement. Linda Beals, Real Estate Coordinator, presenting. Linda?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My presentation this evening is, as noted, for the fiber optic installation agreement for Zayo Group. I'm going to give you a very brief explanation of what this whole fiber optic stuff is about, letting you know that what we do with the fiber optics is it transmits the data between different points using fiber optics, which is the fastest and quickest way to do that. They've been around a while. In order to do that in city right-of-way, we do require entities to have a license agreement with us. They're also required to go through our permitting process and to go through all of, and apply the standards and policy manuals will apply to this. The cables will be located only within right-of-way and primarily within public utility easements. So moving on through that, we do have some existing agreements. Some of you may remember that one of the newer ones was Winrack, who came back in several months ago, or actually, seems like several months ago to me, but it was in 2017. We also have existing agreements with Sprint and I X C. Winrack, to give you an example of what we're looking at tonight with Zayo Group, Winrack come in and they were one of the, they had the largest network we'd had to date, which is serving primarily the Aguafreya School Districts. They have 69,000, approximately 69,111 linear feet. What Zayo is proposing at this time is a little over 200,000 linear feet. So they are proposing a very extensive network within the city. That's actually, if you convert it, 39.9 miles. And this would be available for commercial use for Zayo. The city will be receiving in kind for putting in a C N in lieu of an annual fee, which is similar to what we did with Winrack back in 2017. But in this case, where we got, we'll be getting 10 fiber strands, which is super significant. It sounds like, well, it's only 10, but the amount of data that you can push through 10 fiber strands is absolutely incredible. We're also getting on the entire network, one and a quarter conduit, and what they call it dark conduit. At this time, there won't be any fiber in that tube, but it will allow us to pull fiber in the future. The bundles that are typically placed in those tubes are up to about 144 fibers. What I have to say is, when Zayo came in and talked to us about this, the in-kind portions, we took this out to our traffic folks, we took it out to our IT department, we took it to E C Dev, and they were all very excited about the network. It allows us to have fiber in some very key locations that we don't have right now. It will allow us to put in more of the traffic control units that we currently have than what we currently have. It gives us some key crossings across M C 85 that we currently don't have in the railroad. Those are really difficult crossings to get. They're expensive to bore underneath, because that's what you're typically required, because the railroad very seldom lets you open trench unless they have a trench open, and they're time-consuming to get the permitting through the railroad. All of this is going to be done by Zayo. So we'll have those crossings, which I can tell you, we were told, were just an incredible benefit to the city. Also, one of the routes, as we looked at them, are consistent with where we believe there will be facilities, there are facilities, city facilities. Just to give you an indication, when I first started here at the City of Goodyear, we, I was located over here in the buildings at G M C, and we did not have direct fiber. We went through a carrier. And it was the old, you'd sit here and wait for stuff getting back and forth from City Hall, you'd be sitting there waiting and waiting and waiting. And it's also not the cheapest process. When Van Buren Project went in for the roadway, they added fiber, direct fiber, between the two locations, which we now have. Those delays in getting information back and forth are gone, as well as, there's no longer a cost for that, except for us to maintain our network, which I've talked to folks just to determine. And once it's up and running, we have very little maintenance that's needed. And at the same time, I can tell you that our outage has, have been non-existent with relationship to that fiber. So the hope is that over time, we'll be able to use more and more of these fibers, tie into them, and have more direct relationship with our buildings throughout the city. So, and, one really other exciting idea was that when we talked to Zayo, we told them what we were looking at doing up at the Civic Center. And based upon that, they did pull a route, they have a proposed route that will run up through I 10 and then run up to McDowell. So we will have fiber at the corner, hopefully, within a pretty reasonably short time, at the corner of McDowell and Bullard. They had initially looked at Estrella, but we told them, hey, we'd just really love to see that run up Bullard, and we think you're going to have a lot more users in that area. To give you an indication of why Zayo is here, you may have guessed, but the reason they're here has to do with the fact that we have so much new development in the area. That's what drives it. Right now, Zayo is a very significant carrier on the east side, but to date, we have not had these type of fiber entities looking at Goodyear or the west side. What's driving this is a couple of our very large data centers, and looking at what's coming along with those data centers and the proposed developments that they're seeing with regard to business and along these corridors. So just, that gives you an idea why they're coming into Goodyear. This is the Vest Valley Expansion, and when they came in, we said, hey, so which corridors are you building first? And they said, well, one through four, but we intend to immediately build five through eight right after that. Now you'll notice there's some numbers missing, because some of their expansion includes other communities in the west side, including El Mirage and Surprise, but we got the bulk of the new fiber going in, so that's really exciting. Just to give you a little bit idea on the agreement, it's a five-year agreement, which is consistent with what we did with Winrack, to operate, to install, operate, and maintain, with a three, five-year renewal option, so they have up to 20 years. Again, the standard permit fees will be collected, they will be, they will follow our dry utilities permitting processes, they'll be doing all of our normal processes to go through the city. And as noted, their agreement does provide, if they were to expand the facilities, they could, they could be charged 89 cents a square foot, that was the rate, that's the same rate we had for at Winrack. But we looked at that and looked at what the value of the 10 strands and a one and a quarter inch conduit installation. When we look at doing these installations ourselves, it's very pricey. So we do believe that we are getting every bit of the value that we're giving up as in kind with regard to this whole agreement. So, and you can see that based on the calculations that we've done. That doesn't include heavy boring and some of the other things that they are probably going to be incurring as part of this project. Last but not least, I do want to take a moment, because when I bring agreement like this to you, I'm certainly not the only person working on this. Lisa Maximulins has spent a lot of evenings working through the language and working through the agreement and discussing this agreement with the attorney for Zayo. Clearly, we had input from I T and engineering, and they gave us a whole lot of information that we didn't have going into this. And in this particular case, they worked with us in a very, very short period of time. So I want to make sure that those folks in particular are, that that's made note of. Oh, one last thing I did forget, we do have the ability to joint trench. So if for some reason we determine that we'd like to see more go in, we could work with Zayo to allow for more conduit to go in. We'd have to pay the extra cost to put that conduit in, but it would be far cheaper than digging our own, our own trenching. What we, we did that in particular, because with the Bullard alignment, we're just not sure of what we're looking at. We have a C I P project coming up on that area, so that was something we also put in that agreement that I forgot to mention. The Zayo, we do have several representatives in the audience from Zayo, if you have any questions or would like to talk to them. With that, I will end my presentation this evening.
Linda, good briefing.
Thank you.
And thank you for giving credit to the team. That always says something very special about our city, so. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, would the city clerk please read resolution number 2019-1986 by title only?
Adopt resolution number 2019-1986, authorizing the city manager or her designee to execute the license agreement between the City of Goodyear and Zayo Group LLC and the execution of amendments to the license agreement.
Thank you. Could I have a motion a second to adopt resolution number 2019-1986? Do I hear that motion?
No move.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Hampton, a second by Councilmember Stip. Open for council discussion. Wally, I'm going to go to you first. Do you have anything you want to add to this conversation?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. If we do want to be a smart city, it's important that we have fiber optic and high-speed internet. And I'm very interested in not only having it run up Bullard and McDowell, but Estrella is very important, because remember those merchants up there at McDowell and Estrella Parkway still have dial-up when they're using credit cards? So they need high speed, and they need the fiber optic as well. So thank you very much, we're delighted to welcome to Goodyear.
Thank you. Councilman Hampton?
Yes, I'm also very excited to welcome Zayo to the community. I think positioning ourselves to have that much fiber would just help us economically and move our city even further forward, so real excited about this. And then, to your point, I mean, if we can take any opportunity to also lay things in the trenches while they're open, or opportunities to where we can connect up to that while we're working towards those goals, I think it'd be smart to do that, because other cities will probably be trying to hop on and trying to do the same thing we are. So any opportunity to take advantage of the opportunities that we have with all these large data centers and different facilities coming to Goodyear to help our city for the future is a great opportunity. So looking forward to the partnership with Zayo, and looking forward to having at least the 10 fiber strands at this point. So thank you.
Councilman Loretano?
I want to thank you and the team for a wonderful presentation and bringing this forward. This is obviously something we've talked about for a long time, the need to get the high-speed internet, and I think this will be a great addition and help develop that area. So thank you very much, and welcome to Goodyear.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation, it was awesome. Opened up a couple of questions in my mind about future activities, probably something no one can answer tonight. If we were to look at either dropping in a dry pipe for future down the open trench, or moving fiber from Bullard West to 150th to get it to the Civic Center, are any of those eligible for any mag monies, particularly down McDowell, if we're going to be moving it toward Buckeye, that may be a regional, a regional access point? I'd just be curious to know the answer to that, because if we're going to fit, you know, we're going to put the pipe in for a regional benefit, I think, much like we do on the private side, we ought to be able to recoup some of our costs that way. But great, great presentation, looking forward to it. Thank you.
Any other over here? Well, you said some magic words today, I think I heard correctly, about it's going to help the traffic stops. Yes, so that is one thing. You all remember, we get calls and emails about, I sat at that traffic light too long. In fact, I just got one this week. And I tried to reason with the person, but there was no way to do that. So get that in, so we all have that problem.
Well, historically, the mag process, although it's amazing, you know, it's a great source of funds, it does take time and a lot of energy, so what we're getting here for free is amazing. You know, not free, but in like, and not having to actually go out and solicit funds is really going to be helpful. And then if we can add to that with future mag funds, that'd be great.
And I think we picked the right company, Zayo, and it's, we're giving, we're looking at more than we had anticipated, at least for me it is. So council, any more discussion? All right, let's roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cano?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right, thank you. We're on 16. The next item on business is consider adopting resolution number 2019-1981, develop an agreement for Compass Data Centers. Oh, Broick, you're our presenter, our city attorney.
I'm the council, here I am.
Yes.
I am pinching for Sarah Chilton. She did the legal work on this agreement, but she is enjoying a much-deserved vacation.
Yes.
So I'm going to step in for her this evening.
I'll agree with you on that.
And following up on a theme of data centers, the development agreement you have in front of you this evening is for the Compass project, which is on the northwest corner of Yuma and Bullard. As you recall, back in March, Compass came through for a zoning, and as part of that zoning, we stipulated there would be a development agreement that went along with that zoning, mainly revolving around some infrastructure and enhanced landscaping. You have a summary in your council packet, it's a pretty straightforward agreement, but I'll hit some of the highlights. But basically, it's an agreement that Compass, working through the points of the agreement, on Bullard Avenue, Compass is going to dedicate right-of-way, put in some half-street improvements, and they're going to put in enhanced landscaping. Council approved a enhanced landscaping package, it's above and beyond our normal standards. We've entered into an agreement through the, understanding through this agreement with Compass, that with that enhanced landscaping along Bullard, we're going to share on the costs that are over and above what a standard landscaping package would cost, part of the branding of that Bullard corridor. So this agreement says that over the course of 15 years, or until they're fully reimbursed, they will be reimbursed 50% of that delta between the standard landscaping and the enhanced landscaping costs. That'll come out of the permitting and plan review fees that are generated on the site. Compass will develop normal half-street improvements along Bullard and along Yuma. They will not develop the medians, but they will pay 50% of the cost of the medians in those locations. There will be a low-water crossing installed along Yuma, down by the Bullard Wash. That's in place of what's anticipated in the long term of being a bridge across Bullard, but that's not in the C I P at this point. Compass will be given credit towards what their in-loop payment would have been towards that bridge, because they're putting in the low-water crossing at this time, and that'll eventually be removed, when the bridge eventually goes in. The city will commit to purchase 125 by 125-foot corner on Yuma and Bullard within the next, I think, next year at an appraised valuation for some monuments, entryway construction in the future. That is a term in the agreement. There are some in-loop payments that are to be made towards traffic signals. Compass is required to construct whatever infrastructure is necessary to serve their site. There is a commitment on the city of no more than 1,500 gallons of water per day, per acre, which is normal usage of this type of site. Anything above and beyond that, like heavy water user type of issues, we're not committing to that at this point, that would have to be worked out separate from this agreement. So there's a limited commitment to water on the site. And there was a APS repayment, there's a small substation kind of embedded in their site. APS is already made, they have a very small amount of frontage onto Bullard. They've made it in-loop payment to the city, that'll be conveyed to Compass to be utilized in the landscaping and street frontage of the site. Compass is also required to make a payment to the city for the Van Buren Cost Recovery that was constructed a number of years ago, and that's associated with the development of their site. With that, I will answer any questions you may have. Court Rich, the attorney who did the work for Compass on this agreement is here, and he is willing to answer any questions that council may have as well.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? Does the applicant want to speak at all? Please join, have him join us. Hello?
Mayor, members of the council, for your records, Court Rich with the Rose Law Group. I have nothing to add, other than just to thank your staff, who is so great to work with on this.
Good to hear.
And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Will the city clerk please read resolution number 2019-1981 by title only?
Adopt resolution number 2019-1981, approving the development agreement for Compass Data Centers, directing the city manager to execute the development agreement, authorizing and directing actions and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Can I have a motion a second to adopt resolution number 2019-1981? Do I hear a motion?
No move.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilwoman Pizzillo, and a second by Councilman Hampton. Open for council discussion. Councilwoman Pizzillo?
For those that are listening to this presentation out there, this isn't the first time we've seen this. This has been thoroughly vetted, and I think it's a great project, and I appreciate you working it out with staff. And again, it's nice to hear the staff was very helpful in bringing this. And again, it's nice to hear the staff was very helpful in bringing this to fruition. And again, Sarah does need a well-rested vacation.
Any other comments? All right, let's do a roll call. Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Cano?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries. All right, let's go to 17th, the last one on the business item, the Intergovernmental Agreement with the Avondale Elementary School District for Joint Use of the Schools and Park Facilities. Nathan Torres, Parks and Recreation Director presenting. Nathan?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm excited to bring recommendations forward that will allow for a highly anticipated new neighborhood park within the Canyon Trails development. Nearly 20 years ago, the city entered into a development agreement for the 2,000-acre Canyon Trails development. Part of this agreement called for the donation of three co-located park-school sites. 20 years later, and with the development agreement set to expire in August of this year, one site remains. That site is depicted on the screen in front of you. It is located, it's a 15-acre site located at Harrison and 174th Avenue. Per the development agreement, the Avondale Elementary School District will acquire the 15-acre site for the development of a five-acre neighborhood park and a 10-acre future school. While timing for the school is undetermined, the school district has committed to designing and constructing the neighborhood park by July of 2021. The park will include an open turf area, a totlot with a built-in shade element, ramada with picnic tables, landscaping. It will also feature some onsite temporary parking that will be moved to permanent parking as the school develops in that other section of the property. The district has also committed to maintaining the park once constructed. The IGA and associated property deeds before you this evening include safeguards to ensure that the developed park will continue to serve as a park for the residents forever. And before I conclude the presentation, I would like to recognize the Avondale Elementary School District specifically. With us this evening is Jill Barrigan. She's the Executive Director for Business Services for Avondale, and Jill is with us.
Welcome, Jill, thank you for coming.
And also, I'd like to recognize the work of Dr. Betsy Hargrove, who is not with us today, the school superintendent, who is attending a conference. And probably one of the most community-minded groups that I've had the pleasure to work with throughout this process. So, very, very good true community partners in the Avondale Elementary School District.
That's great to hear.
And with that, I will answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? Oh, yes. Please come forth. State your name.
My name is Nancy Hampton. We recently moved into that area. We live on Sherman Street, which is where the park will be going. And I know that they just Richmond American built out the last two streets, and the established community, they've been sitting there for like 10 years, looking at that dirt lot with overgrown weeds, were constantly calling and complaining about the weeds. If there's any way that they could move up that timeline when they will start it, that would be much appreciated.
Good. Thank you. Do you need anything addressed or anything on that? Thank you for joining. Okay, so let's go on. Can I have a motion a second to approve the restated in the Second Amendment in the Intergovernmental Agreement with Avondale Elementary School District for the Joint Use of a School and Park Facilities and authorizing the city manager or her designee to execute the necessary documents? Do I hear a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
All right, your motion from Councilwoman Pizzillo and a second from Councilmember Cano. Open for council discussion. Councilwoman Pizzillo?
Hello, Nathan. I appreciate all the effort and from the school district on getting this thing, you know, moving. I know you had a tight deadline on August for those in the public. And again, this isn't the first time we've been, this has been vetted through the city council. But again, I appreciate the cooperation between the two and look forward to this getting built. Thank you.
Wally, you have any comments? Nope, guess not. Anybody else on? Oh, Councilman Hampton?
Yeah, I'm also looking forward to this park being built. It'd be a nice use of that space, actually. Finally being put in motion and being used. I know the residents there are pretty excited about having it there as opposed to just dirt. And then just to clarify, so along 174th, the other 10 acres is the school. So if there are overgrown weeds and things like that, the residents would need to call the school district themselves.
Correct. That would be handled by the school district, and it would be their responsibility to maintain.
Okay. Yeah, I do appreciate the school district, their partnership. It's a great, Avondale does a great job. I've seen their other school use parks, and I think it'll be a great use for that space. And looking forward to have my kids play in that park as well. So, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
You know, I think on that, on that point about the schools, however, as any property owner has the responsibility to maintain that, I think if we are getting phone calls instead of passing the buck, et cetera, I think we need to try to talk to the school district directly and get them to take care of that as we would any other property owner. It's been difficult for that community for a very long time, and then to have it overgrown with weeds and then growing over the sidewalks, et cetera, that's not, we wouldn't allow that pretty much in any other area. So I say to the Avondale School District, let's get on that. And then to our staff, obviously, if we can just make sure, follow up, make sure it gets done, so we don't have folks having to deal with that, thanks. But other than that, this is a great win-win for everybody.
Well, I think letting the neighborhood also know who's responsible for that helps. Probably gets it done faster when there's not any misunderstanding of who is in charge. So, any other discussion? All right, let's vote on this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, Wally. The ayes have it. That's it, thank you so much. And we are at the informational items tonight. Good job, guys. I'm looking at that time, I'm proud of you. Do you have anything you'd like to report? Activities, accommodations? Councilwoman Pizzillo?
A big thank you for Parks, Rick, and all the people that put on that Fourth of July at the ballpark. Great event. You know, it seems like more and more of the lines, that zip line seemed to be a very popular event. I know the line was long, some of the other rides they had in there as well, trying to get through there. But again, everything went off very well, and all indications are, what I saw from it, people had a great time there. So, let your staff know, great job.
Any other comments? All right, I'm turning over to the city manager. Cover the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We just wanted to make sure council was fully aware that the school district does not actually own that property until this agreement is signed. It is owned by the developer.
Whoops, whoops.
So I wanted to make that.
Very much for that, but.
Otherwise, if it's my turn to do some updates, I wanted to report back on the wonderful event that we had for the Star Spangled Fourth. We had more than 9,500 spectators come through the gates with, we're estimating around 5,000 onlookers who surrounded the ballpark in order to watch the fireworks. The in-park attendance this year represents a 7% increase from last year. The event was presented by Fry's Food Stores and featured a whole series of things, a 20-minute, of course, fireworks show with live music. We had light-up sticks that were given away, zip line and mechanical swing rides, food and drink specials. We had 700 beach balls that we helped to drop, and we had 19 participating sponsors. I also wanted to send out a special thank you to our Census Complete Count Committee, who was at the event and engaged with more than 300 families to talk about the upcoming census. And I do have some key chains for you. The ballpark team is currently tabulating survey information and evaluating the feedback to always seek continuous improvement. And with that, I'd like to wish Mayor and council members a nice summer break.
You reminded us. This is our last meeting for some time. So, I want to thank council. I want to thank for your cooperation and pursuing all issues and looking at it directly and participating in these social events as well as on the dais. So, I look forward to the next year. It's so exciting. By the time we come back together, we're gonna see a lot of businesses under roof, have a new restaurant, have new businesses. So you should be very proud of yourself. We want to thank the staff, we all know that, because you're so efficient and so capable, and it's attracting so many businesses to decide they're gonna build in Goodyear. It doesn't happen overnight. And a very cooperative and creative new city manager, not so new, but it all takes the teamwork. And we talk about this all the time, but we're living proof of that. And so, when our people drive the streets around, I want them to know the hard work, the number of hours this staff. I get emails at hours that they should not be working, but they are, just to get the job done. So greatly appreciated. The next meeting is a regular meeting on August 19th, so we have till then. 2019 is 6:00 PM. The council will have a break till then. No further business, this meeting is adjourned.